It sure did. Is everybody waiting on Karen? You ready? You would please stand with us as we say the pledge and the inevitable vacation.
I got you.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we thank you for today. We thank you for another opportunity that you've given us to be here, Lord, to meet, discuss the business of Walton County. I pray that you'll just be with each member of the commission up here today, Lord, and the staff as they present to us and we make decisions. I pray to just give us the wisdom to make the correct decisions in the best interest of Walton County. We have these things in Jesus' name. Amen. The first item is approval of minutes from last meeting. Anybody? You have a motion?
Second.
Walker, a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kristin, you gonna... Before she start, real quick, let me just ask everybody if you haven't already to please either turn off or silence your cell phones or electronic devices to prevent interruptions. And Kristin, you can go ahead and get started.
There we go. We have two requests for continuances tonight. Item number two, request to continue until the March 12th, 2020 meeting. And item number five, the Beach Club, there's a request to continue also till the March 12th, 2020 meeting.
You're taking both together? Is this moving to the same meeting, commissioners?
Uh, most to continue.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second? Anybody want to say anything on these two items? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving into the agenda to item number three, the Miramar Car Wash and Restaurant. And I've got Bob here to present.
Good evening. Um, Miramar Car Wash and Restaurant is a rezoning. The project donors is Andrew Venecios. The future land use, obviously staying the same, is mixed use. The zoning is going from coastal center to coastal center mixed use. TRC has approved that. It meets the comprehensive plan. There's no outstanding comments. And if you have any questions, I would gladly answer it for you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Don't see any. Bob, you're lucky now.
Can you enter it into record, please?
Sure, accepted.
Thank you.
Afternoon, everyone. Jamie Eubanks with Jenkins Engineering, E U B A N K S. Just real briefly, we think this is a logical location for this. It's a few parcels over is the Culvers, which is zoned coastal center mixed use. And then actually, this shares a driveway with the McDonald's, which has a drive-through, of course, as well. So, I think this is a logical location, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Is this a car wash there now, is what it is?
It's actually nothing there right now. It's actually the FDOT lay-down yard for the work that's going on right now.
They want to build a car wash and a restaurant?
They're gonna have to deal with some wetlands in there, aren't they?
There are some. DOT actually, as part of their improvements, did take some out. But the eastern and western sides are fairly wide open, and the center does have wetlands.
Are they gonna split whatever they do in there?
That's the intention. They could come back at a later date and do something in the center if they permanent it, obviously. But they do have room. The intention is the car wash on the McDonald's side, which has most of the uplands, start with that. And then work their way from the opposite, the east side in.
I wasn't sure when it said car wash and restaurant, if they will get combined.
I know. That would be an interesting concept.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? We'll let you know. Public comments, does anybody wish to speak on this item? Alright, we'll close public comments. Commissioners?
I can approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, all of the remaining items on the agenda are quasi-judicial. So, anyone who anticipates testifying before the board on any of the remaining items on the agenda, if you would, stand at this time to be sworn in as a witness. I raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth? Thank you.
Okay, the second item for this evening is the Walton County Detailed Special Area Plan. One request, this is a large development request by the St. Joe Company. And I request that the staff report be entered into the record.
This is accepted.
This is approximately 2,435 acres. They are requesting conceptual approval, so this is like a planned unit development, a little bit different within the Bay Walton Sector Plan area. Of 5,896 residential dwelling units, 623,000 square feet of non-residential, 375 hotel rooms, and 168,000 square feet of Marina Recreation Area, and a 36-hole golf course. Commissioners, this was tabled from your last meeting. If you'll recall, we were going through some of the deviations, as well as some of the changes that staff had requested that the applicant made or make to be consistent with the sector plan policies within the comprehensive plan. And also, we had some outstanding school board comments at that time. So, these issues have been resolved, and staff is comfortable now and ready to recommend approval of the project as it is. You will see in your packet that there is a letter from the school board from Michelle Doggett. She couldn't be here tonight, but she has been in communication and also with the applicant and phase of this D-SAP. In addition, they did make some transportation changes to the network, which we feel will be better consistent with the sector plan itself and with the future mobility of the county. So, we're pretty satisfied with where that is now.
Kristin, if I'm not mistaken, our concerns there were the width of the right-of-way.
That's correct, yes.
And that has all been resolved?
Yes, they have shown on the future transportation map, 110-foot right-of-way on those collector, minor arterial, major collector facilities, which includes the parallel to 98 corridor, which is very important, as well as the 38 connection on Watersound Parkway. So, those are critical transportation facilities moving forward into the future, definitely. Though, I know that you also were interested in the deviations, which begin on page 22 of the staff report. So, if you would like to go through those, we'll do that at your request, or hear from the applicant first, whichever.
Once you let him go through those, we'll...
Okay, so those are on page 22 of the actual D-SAP, and I'm not sure what page that is in your packet, but it's sort of maybe the fifth document that's in there. So, the first deviation that is...
We're gonna get started, Kristin. I was gonna show them.
Okay.
So, the first page of the D-SAP is gonna have this colored.
That's right. It's the actual kind of PUD concept plan, if you will, of the D-SAP.
On page 22?
Starts on page 22, and they do have those enumerated in here fairly clearly. Everybody there?
Any of you need this book, you guys can have it.
Page 59. All of it.
59?
None of the design guidelines, isn't it?
Yes, it's immediately following subsection six, and it says Walton County Land Development Code deviations.
You can go ahead and get started.
Okay, so the first deviation that's requested, that staff concurs with, and we feel is necessary really, is the wetlands protection deviation. This development, when they were through the sector plan process, they have a special general permit and ecosystem management agreement with the Army Corps and then Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And that agreement spells out some requirements for dealing with wetlands that are slightly different than our land development code. We would review this project under that agreement. And we, I think it's good that this is enumerated in here. Are there any questions about that? They have quite a substantial amount of wetland and natural resource preservation in this development. The second deviation is building setback requirements. And that's a deviation to section 5.00, point 03. They're seeking minimum zero side setbacks and 10 feet between buildings with zero front and rear setbacks for all uses. I, staff doesn't have any objection to this. This is a contextual issue. This is internal to their development. It is a development pattern that they established that people buy into, you know, greenfield development. So, you know, there's no issue with, you know, really compatibility, you know, external to the development because of these deviations. This is all internal to their project. And in some cases, I feel that, you know, having a deviation on a setback is a good thing, depending on what type of urban design you're trying to achieve. So, you know, let's say they have a mixed-use area, and they want to bring buildings up to the street or what have you. Sometimes that's better. So, you know, we don't have any issues with those setback deviations.
If there's any questions on that one?
That'll come up more per phase, too, won't it?
It will. I mean, it'll come, we'll see the, well, the projects will come up as minors, so you won't see them again, but they'll come in as minors.
But y'all will see it.
We'll see it, and we do have an overall sort of set of criteria for urban design for this project. So, we'll be looking at that to make sure that, you know, all of that makes sense when those minors come in.
Ask us, y'all, if you would, when you get up to present, just touch on that zero setbacks and how all that stuff work.
The third is landscaping, dealing with street trees. They're requesting street trees every 25 feet and a minimum of 10-foot wide planting area. Or, I'm sorry, the code requires street trees every 25 feet with a minimum 10-foot wide planting area. And they would like to do street trees at 60 feet between trees. And that's consistent with some cross-sections that they have shown for, in their plan. And with Watersound Origins, apparently. Bridget, this street trees here, are we talking about local streets? Are we talking about all streets? That we probably need to clarify in here.
Kristin, we had discussed that for our local streets.
Okay, so we'll make that clarification. I think that makes a really big difference. So, with that, you know, there's really no issue. This would be residential streets within subdivisions. The second, or the fourth deviation there is building foundation landscaping. I think that they're requesting just to eliminate that requirement altogether. So, the code basically saying they don't want to do that.
What's the, what's the... Now, we have the requirement. Why is, why do we have a requirement?
It's 50% of the facade length for multifamily or non-residential buildings. So, basically, what it does is aesthetically kind of breaks up, you know, the asphalt into concrete wall, you know, look. And it's real important, actually, like, I think, you know, let's say you have like a convenience store or something like that that's going in, and they've got, you know, pull-up parking, and it's close up to the road. It really does help kind of break up that design monotony. In their case, you know, they do have a substantial commercial component up on 98. You know, I think it would be nice, but it's not a, you know, it's like a public health and safety issue or anything like that. It's really an aesthetics issue.
Right, but that's part of the scenic corridor.
Yeah, the scenic corridor, so they'll still have to meet the scenic corridor buffer requirement. So, it has, the scenic corridor does have different landscaping requirements for the buffer, and so they'll still have to meet that. Yeah. Okay, the next deviation is dealing with off-street parking requirements. So, for attached and detached single-family for more bedrooms, the code currently requires four spaces per dwelling unit, plus one additional space for each additional bedroom over four. And they would reduce this with this deviation to two spaces per dwelling unit. And I think they did make a change. I thought we made a change here dealing with short-term rentals, yes. That was your suggestion at the last meeting. Our land development code currently discourages a lot of parking at short-term rentals and just the, in general, bringing up the cars. And that's actually been working pretty well. We've been kind of field testing that to see how that's working out, and people are understanding that, you know, not to bring the cars. So, this really would affect the residential, the permanent, sink, permanent family residential, which, you know, I think, and they can talk about this a little bit, but their primary market's the retirement community. So, that may be what the logic is there with the two spaces being all that's necessary, given the household size that they're anticipating. You know, again, if these were public streets, and this was a development that was mixing into where other developments are, and there was a potential for some overflow problem or something that was gonna cause problems, you know, it may be more of an issue, but we don't have any objection. And then stub streets. They're requesting a deviation from the code to allow stub streets to future projects in undeveloped adjacent lands. They're, they want to provide the stub streets. Yeah. Which I, I think the code kind of requires, the new code, but there may be some interpretation difference there that they want to call out. Okay, moving down to block length. The code limits block lengths in residential areas to 1,200 feet. And this is primarily in there for bike and pedestrian movement in development, so that there's not long stretches of way that don't have any cross-access. And they're requesting that they can extend up to 2,000 feet without direct or approval. And for mixed-use and commercial blocks, they can extend up to 1,000 feet. And I think they're making a distinction between a road, a vehicular cross at that, at that interval. So, it may, there may still be pedestrian and bike and golf cart accesses in between those intervals. The development, the way that it's laid out in the sector plan, it's really a suburban development pattern. So, I'm, I think the ship's already sailed there. I'm not sure that there's reason to object to this at this point. Moving on sidewalks, as code requires sidewalks on both sides of residential streets and all new subdivisions. And they are asking that they be allowed to do on-grade pass or multi-use pass to substitute for sidewalks. That's a good change, right? Yeah, so that allows for bikes a little bit better as well. And we would encourage that. The code's a little bit outdated on phone service, so they're saying internet instead of phone.
I think you should have to have hardwired phones to every house.
Yeah. I guess we didn't catch that up in the update. So, oh, gosh, I've been doing that, huh? That's too loud, isn't it? Karen, are you so mad? Okay. Alright, stormwater management, the last deviation, again, related back to the RPG and the EMA agreement. Those design standards are the same design standards that are in our code, so there's really no the level of service standards on the storm event and duration are compatible with our code.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am. You sure you're ready for this? You think so?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time today. My name's Bridget Precise. B R I D G E T P R E C I S E. I'm with the St. Joe Company, and we are here to continue discussion on the sector plan. I don't know if you have any specific questions, or you want me to go back through some of the deviations that Kristin had mentioned earlier. But we have made some modifications since the last meeting and feel like we've addressed the comments that were both outstanding and the comments that were raised in the, in the meeting last month.
If you would, just touch on, I mean, personally, just the, like, the zero
Yes, certainly.
And the, the foundation landscaping, the reasoning for that.
We have some exhibits in the D-SAP packet that were in the report that start on page 28. And they show some illustrations of some of the setbacks. The zero setback really gives us flexibility. At this point, we're coming in with a concept plan, and we haven't gotten into detailed design for each phase of residential and/or commercial development. But by having a zero setback, it gives us some flexibility. If we're gonna continue the War Sound Origins pattern development, which is what we're proposing for a lot of this, we'll have 15-foot front setbacks, 10-foot rear setbacks, and anywhere from five to seven and a half on either side. Knowing that we're gonna maintain at least a 10-foot minimum separation between buildings for fire code. On the commercial stuff, it gives us some flexibility there, where we might want to have like a covered patio coming out, where, you know, kind of makes it more interesting of a streetscape and lifestyle experience, as opposed to having such a rigid, you know, section, setback section. On the landscape foundation, we just wanted to, it's not to say that we wouldn't do any foundation landscape ever, but there might be some corner conditions or some other conditions where we've got some, and we could certainly come in on a case-by-case and ask for those. Where it might make more sense to have, you know, if it's bike parking right up against the building, or again, if there's table seating right out front, that, that, that having landscape in there just makes it a little more complicated to deliver some of that.
I'm okay. I think that's a good explanation. I mean, I was just curious, because when people see, like, for instance, zero setbacks, a lot of times, that's gonna just set off alarm bells for people. You know, the same thing with the landscape.
Yeah.
I know that you do quality development, and you don't want something that's not going to live.
No, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions about the deviations?
I've got a question. I'm trying to wrap my interview. This gonna be a
No, our sense is that it's gonna be primary housing. That's what we are going to design our first development order project towards primary housing. So, what we're doing right now in War Sound Origins is we've got, a lot of the homes there have a courtyard entry for their driveway. So, they've got a two-car garage typically, and then they can park two cars in the garage, two cars in the driveway. And then we've also incorporated parking pads throughout the community, not in the drive lanes of the street, but adjacent to the street, between the street and the lot. So, there's sufficient parking for guests. They can park in the parking pads off the street, or park in the driveway if they're coming to visit. The lots are deep enough that they can accommodate additional cars on the lot. Yes. Now, we will have some areas where we'll be doing probably some different-sized lots, and you may not be able to get four cars in there, but I think those would be smaller homes, too, that wouldn't have the, you know, three and four and five-bedroom. We haven't experienced any disputes on that at this point, and we've got, I don't know, probably close to 500 homes built in Origins. It seems to be working pretty good. The Homers Association is responsible for kind of the overall maintenance of the streets and the right-of-way areas. So, any complaints are directed to the, that would come up would be directed to the property management company. Yes.
If not, we'll send Bobby out there. Anybody else have any questions on the, on the deviation?
Questions on anything else?
Yeah, I got one. The proposed road going up through the middle is eventually gonna cross over the intercoastal. Isn't that the plan?
That's the plan. That is DOT's West Bay Parkway Road. So, we're showing it just for reference, because we know it's slated to come through there, but they're still going through their PD&E process, and they have not set the final alignment yet.
There's no kind of timeframe on it at this point?
At this point, it's probably 30 years.
30?
30?
That's what they tell us.
Long-term planning. We need it, though.
Yes, yeah, I know there's a huge interest in it for hurricane evacuation and just general circulation.
Is that realistic, 30, or is that just kind of, I mean, because I guess they could speed it up if they wanted to.
They could speed it up if they wanted to. You know, it's something that's been out there. It's something that, you know, I know a lot of different parties have had interest in. I know they looked at doing a toll road at one time for it, but the, just the tolling authority couldn't get behind it for whatever reason.
Yeah, that bridge is gonna cost some money, isn't it? It's gotta be pretty high to get over the intercoastal.
Yeah, I think it's 65 feet or something. At Commerce.
Well, I didn't know if it was gonna be something. You know, I got a couple of trips planned. I want to see which way I needed to go to the airport, so...
Well, that was one of the things...
Trying to get to the airport, it's, well, it would be a lot faster to go to the airport that way, isn't it?
It would be. That was one of the things we thought the toll, might make the toll road make sense, because you haven't taken away the free option. And if the people want to pay to get somewhere, you know, they would have the toll option, but it didn't seem to work out that way.
Anybody else have any questions for applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll open up for public comments. Does anybody have anything on this item?
I think they alleviated all, you know, the concerns that we had.
We closed public comments, and yeah, I mean, I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry, we closed comments? I apologize.
Not anymore. You closed it down.
I was still thinking about that fast route to the airport.
Yeah. No, I think they've, what I see, they've addressed the concerns that we had.
Right.
Any other discussion? Anybody? Anybody? What's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item is Walton's Landing. It's a major development order application submitted by Interlight Engineering Corporation on behalf of D.R. Horton, requesting to approve and develop seventy-three single-family lots, ninety-eight townhomes, a pool amenity, and a one-acre commercial parcel on thirty-eight point two-two, plus or minus acres, with future land use of mixed-use, and the zoning of village mixed-use. The property is located at twenty-four thirty-two Chat Holly Road, and is identified by the parcel number in your staff report. Mr. Chair, there's just a couple of things I'd like to touch on this project. It has, there's no outstanding comments. It has, it does meet traffic concurrency. And the one comment will be put into the conditions of approval would be Public Works is requesting that a condition of, of the development order, the future commercial site, as shown on the development plans, will only have one access point off of Nellie Drive, and that access point will be located on the northern limits of the commercial site, and no access points off Chat Holly Road will be allowed. There's no other outstanding issues. The applicant is here to speak, Mr. Smith, and I'd like to enter the staff report into the record, please. Are there any questions for me before I turn it over to David? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and I'm representing D.R. Horton. Walton's Landing is thirty-eight point two-two acres, as Bob mentioned, and it's located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Nellie Drive and Chat Holly. The zoning's village mixed-use, and we are proposing a mixed-use development consisting of seventy-three single-family residences, ninety-eight townhomes. We have a pool amenity and a future, a one-acre future commercial. And I'll point to the site plan. That's a general overview of Walton's Landing, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Indian family residences, how big are those lots?
They are seventy feet wide by one-twenty deep.
What kind of commercial are you planning in there?
I'm not sure at this point, we will come back through the process for that once we know. Right now, it's just vacant, and then we'll go back through the deal process for the commercial portion.
And there's no traffic concerns on Chat Holly, is there?
There wasn't. We did, one of the comments from Public Works was to also do an operational analysis of the intersection, and it did not require any improvements.
Any idea how many trips that'll add?
I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Chat Holly, like everything else, is becoming a picture road with all those-
It's surprising that no, no improvements were required.
There's a mixture of a little everything on Chat Holly.
Drainage issues? Well, the site is low now, so we are proposing to fill, but we are providing stormwater management and treatment attenuation per the county code and state requirements in wet detention ponds. So right now, there's no stormwater management on the property, which we'll be adding the wet detention ponds to treat the stormwater. And I wanted to point out the condition that Bob mentioned as well, we have reviewed and agreed to the condition by Public Works, and where we would place the entrance to the commercial.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Not right now.
Thank you.
Hold tight, though, you never know.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up public comments, is there anybody who would like to address this issue? You know, this might be the first meeting we've ever had.
Don't.
Nobody signed up to speak, and nobody got up yet. This must be a good sign, right? Yeah, we'll close public comments, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is that our last item? Well, I'll tell you what, it'll take just a moment, and I want to thank the planning staff. You guys are amazing, you do a great job under tremendous pressure. Karen, you've been awesome to work with. But I am stepping down as chairman, and will be submitting my resignation to Bill Chapman from the Planning Commission effective tomorrow. Getting ready to do something different, and hopefully won't be off for too long. But, Sydney, I thank you, you've been a tremendous help. Mac, I wish Mac was here, Mac has been-
He's watching.
He's, he has done, he's done a-
He was, he just fell out.
He's done a, no, Mac did. But Mac has been a tremendous help to me, as has Kristen and Bob, and the other planners in the office. And I said, I really, really do appreciate what y'all do, appreciate how you've helped me. And I know that whoever these guys decide they want to be their next chairman, and whoever Mr. Chapman appoints to replace me will do a fantastic job. So I thank you very much.
Gonna miss you.
Yeah, I think we give you a hand, too, for all you've done for us.
You're gonna miss it. Wow, you didn't want to spring that on us, did you?
To think of his backyard burgers, backyard burgers.